Hey Yoshi, um, I have a couple of que- questions. Number one, is this such an important meeting he held during COVID-19 while we're still, everybody's still at home? And I've, um, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if this is the most important business that, that's my first question. My other question would be, it seems that you want to take away five from people that have had access, uh, um, all these years from April 1st, um, through, uh, ending date was. And I believe that your proposal takes away five months. That's an offer to try to take away so that it should be inconsistent with, and then what you're gonna do is, if, uh, some bungalow colonies want to, they will have to apply. And, and it seems like the board is gonna be, um, maybe overburdened any applications, too many new applications. So what's the purpose in all that? Can you explain that to me instead of leaving it the way it was?
I apologize. This is not a question. We really can't do questions and answers. Your comments will be added to the board, uh, uh, to our record tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we can go now to Paul, Paul Niger.
Hi, everybody. How you doing? Welcome, uh, to the board to a unusual. You will, I'm from Landsman's, uh, Housing Corporation, Landsman's Bungalow Colony, Landman's Day Camp. Uh, we, we obviously, as you know, we have two different facilities within the, one is our day camp. We should understand that's run by the Department of Health and there's no way, uh, for us to avoid that. The other question that I have is, how do we get around, uh, we're a homeowners association, which we are a bungalow colony, but we're as well, we are really a homeowners association. So I just wanted to find out, do we still fall into the same category as bungalow colonies and so on? Um, units are basically owner occupied and there's no renters or anything else. And we just want to basically be on the list as not really full-time residents, but we are, um, a homeowners associate. We fall into the same category as a seasonal bungalow colony.
We're not, we can't do questions and answers, but I will point out one point i- is that, bring up a good example in the sense that everyone, your, your property may be classified as, as different things and had different dates, which is part of the reason we're having this conversation. So, okay, go over that with you offline.
Thank you.
But keep in mind, I just want to remind, and every, um, when we're done with the public hearing, I expect that the proposed law, the dates are gonna be, um, we're looking at May 15th to October 31st. So that we're not, we're published, are probably not gonna be the dates that are included in the law. Jack Shatt, you, I, I saw your hand was up.
Um, hi, I'd like to ask, I'm a business, I'm a business owner, uh, upstate in the town of Fallsburg for approximately 10 years now. Is it, does this law, is this going to apply to permits for our business? Or, or will be able to open our businesses and whatever the state law is, what, because it's a restaurant that we wouldn't be allowed to do dine-ins or delivery and pickup?
The only thing that, right. So the, again, whether or not any of these uses open will be, you know, cleaning up the dates, the governor's order will determine what can open and what can't. We, it will be the governor's decision and the Department of Health and not ours, so.
So how do we follow up and how do we?
We'll gotta watch essentially, again, I can't get into, anyone that needs, this leak and, I, I'm not looking to avoid it. Please send me an email and I'll do my best to get back to you in a very short amount of time. But we can't get into a question and answer tonight. It's just not the purpose of this meeting or this hearing. Questions afterward, I'll do my best to get back to you as quickly as we can. Rob Ruaco. Is that correct? Melissa, can we unmute Rob Ruaco?
I am. Okay.
Go ahead, Rob. Go ahead, Rob Ruaco. Okay, no, Rob. I have Samsung, SMG.
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mayor Perlmont.
Hello, Mayor.
Barak Moshe Woodburn. Come on, basically, um, if, uh, you want to change the dates this year 2000, so basically April 1st passed already. So technically, everybody's open. So if you want to change law, you gotta make a law, everybody has to close down. Then you can open by June 1st or whatever day, because, uh, technically, if every, the, the date has passed, I don't think you can reverse the date and start over. You can't open from April 1st. So it's just a common, what I, I thought that th- this law is not appropriate for this year at all.
Okay, next, MH.
Yeah, questions. Um, a place that has mixed use, winterized and non-winterized. How would that be classified? And also, will the taxes be adjusted?
Again, specific properties need to contact us offline and we can have a stop for here.
Okay, and, and what about taxes will be adjusted?
Well, the season are assessed as such, and that's an assessment question. You can talk to our assessor.
Okay, thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yep. Since you can raise your hand and that's how we're gonna call on you, so. iPad. I have simply iPad. I don't know who that is.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We do need your name, though.
The mitigation of tax. Uh, the mitigation of tax.
I'm sorry.
When you say, the, the question that was the prior question about the mitigation of taxes during this period. Uh, you, you have, you're spelling the assessor? And who does the assessor report to?
Assessor is an independent body, but again, each property gets assessed based on its value. We have nothing to do with that.
I understand that, but if the, if the town closes the property, taxes logically be mitigated for that period of time?
Now the question and answer period, you can absolutely, if you have an issue with your taxes, you need to discuss with the assessor.
What's your email address?
What's the assessor's phone number and email?
It's on our website.
What's on? What happened? What happened?
Okay. Michael S.
Hi, um, the section of the law that you're, uh, seeking to, um, uh, change is just the definition of seasonal occupancy, correct?
We, we provided it in the notice.
Right, and the only other place been seen is mentioned in the, uh, town code is in relation to day camps. I think that's the only import that this change would really have. Uh, you know, I don't see anywhere else in the code that it mentions those two words together. And the other comment is, uh, code was updated in 2013, at least the building enforcement code was updated in 2013. I don't understand why seven years later, we have to revisit dates, that seemingly are just arbitrary at this point. It's, you don't have to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Eli Moskowitz.
Uh, yeah, just maybe I didn't understand the date factor, what you want through October 31st. What, what does that mean? You're saying that that's going? What is it? What is the date? The date is that that's when the summer months will be open?
I, I, we can't, this is not agreed. I'm sorry, it just can't be that. It's not what this is about.
It's not a question and answer. It's just an explanation as to what the date mentioned, the change from April 1st to May 1st.
May 15th. So, uh, May 15th, October 1st. Adam Inger. Can you move on to Adam Inger, please?
Hello. Anyone?
Go ahead, Adam.
Are you gonna hear me? Um, good afternoon. Uh, just a quick comment, um, for a couple gentlemen that wanted to know why the dates were, since they've been in place for quite a number of years. Um, I don't know if they, uh, watched the news or watched anything, but if you can't tell, there, there is something going on that on for, I don't know, last, um, well, my lifetime and probably yours is the first gentleman who spoke and the second to last gentleman as well, who claimed that, uh, the laws were in place since 2013. I think this, uh, for this gentleman is because of the influx of people that would be brought in during the summer. Therefore, it would make only sense for this community that cannot handle the influx of people. If they were, God forbid, to get sick, to then have a catastrophe like New York City has on their, now that town is not capable of the entity for that matter. Um, so for you not to understand that is kind of, um, I guess you'll have to understand it one of these days. That's it.
Thank you. Moshe, you're up.
Oh, okay, um, you said that you're trying to get the date uniform. Now, if you have May 15th to October, was, uh, that, at least, that's what I understood, that, that, that's a uniform in the code. Uh, in the, in the, in the code, in the different, uh, different descriptions of properties. I- if you're going from May 15th to October 31st, they still will not be, uh, uniformed, so what, the way it is? I, I mean, is there anything, I, I'm gonna say it in a different way. Is there any that you guys are not telling us? Because you, 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 because you, your reasoning does not make any logic, there's no logic to your reasoning. There, there's no reasoning here. You're saying that you want, yet you're not doing the date uniform. So if you're not doing the date uniform, then, 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 then your reasoning is not logic. So I suspect, I suspect, which is a possibility, is there a possibility that you're doing this for some other reason that you're not?
None whatsoever.
Okay, then, then how come the dates are not gonna be uniform?
They're gonna be uniform.
How are they gonna be uniform at date of June 1st?
We're not, this is not a question and answer period.
So maybe, I, I understand that. So my, so my, my comment is that the dates are gonna be uniform because can, can start at June, June 1st, and, and you're trying to do this 15th. So obviously, obviously, the dates are not gonna be uniform.
Thank you.
Please tell us the real reason behind this.
Shimon, next.
Many years ago, the definition occupied a certain amount of time, but not more than a certain amount of time. That can say, five years ago approximately, the definition of seasonal change, it should be six months out of the year and not that. This year now, seasonal is changing to mean two months out of the year, three months out of the year. The following year, seasonal can mean one month out of the year. What if?
And they gotta tell us we can't come up at all?
Time, and you need to give us your name.
Shimon?
I know. Thank you, Shimon. Okay, Miri. You're next.
You guys are so scary.
Mary, you're on. I don't think she's gonna speak, Steve.
Erwin, can you go to Erwin? I know he's.
So question, is it, it, well, statement really, what, what if we live there for over six months right now in the seasonal, um, seasonal house? And is this based on zoning or actual use? How does it affect the private homes? Is it, and also, is this a permanent change or is this just a COVID-19 change? To me, it seemed like it was gonna be a permanent. I'm not really sure what that has to do with anything. And does it affect voting rights? If I live in my home for seven months a year right now, which is completely allowed, and now you're limiting it to three, so now would I lose my voting rights because I can't live there more?
First of all, it's not limited to three, but second, secondly, it has not.
Well, it was limiting September 15th was the proposal of what I had seen.
Right.
So it's basically three months.
May 15th to October 30th is what the new change is.
Yes, but that's still under six months, so I wouldn't be able to claim permanent. There for six months and a day, I can, and I can vote locally. If you change it to under that, then I can no longer do that, and then I won't be able to complain, won't be able to claim permanent residence.
Okay, take that under advisement. Thank you, Erwin.
That is obviously the reason why it's being changed from May, because 15th does not make any sense. Not a single date is listed on 15th.
Okay, Paul Niger, are you, you back?
There we go. I have a question. Has, does the town have ventilators? Or ventilators within that area?
Not really relevant to this conversation, but that's.
And has, has the town as well, uh, looked into the economic of business? Um, putting about a million people into Sullivan County, has the town considered the, um, the financial side of this whole thing?
That really is, that, that's not the basis to clean up. Indeed, so.
I know, but, but the, this number of people putting into the economy up there certainly, uh, can hurt.
First, not, it's up to the, we're not a decision for this board. That's a decision for the governor and the Department of Health.
Under the Sullivan County or the, or the governor?
We're all under the governor's. As regard to what's happening right now.
Okay, thank you.
Joey.
Hi, I was hoping you could explain, um, you know, in terms of how the rules being promulgated. Is it under the State Administrative Procedure Act? Is it an emergency rule and the purpose for them?
No, it's, it's simply a zoning change. It has nothing to do with any emergency.
State Administrative Procedure Act?
I don't.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town, Town Board. They meet, um, as a legislative body two days every month and have been, um, throughout the pandemic. And there's two, generally two work sessions each month as well.
Okay, if your name's not up, I can't call on you. So if you're signed in without a name, it's, it's on the record, so.
Uh, Steve, do you getting me through? It's Ken Wiesen. I've been trying to, um, make a comment.
Who's this?
Ken Wiesen. Um, hi, everyone. Um, I've been coming up to, uh, the Catskills, uh, Sullivan County and specifically the town of Fallsburg since 1957. Um, in the community and have been active throughout my whole life. Um, I want to tell you that, um, historically, the seasonals were not religious communities. Um, they were camps that were non, uh, not ethnic and they were open to the community. Uh, things have changed since, but I wanted to sway people from the thought that there may be some, um, underlying, um, purpose to any of these, uh, thoughts and, um, conversations that have anything to do with ethnicity or religion. I think that is by the fact that it seems to be, everybody is dancing around the fact that we are endemic. And that people's lives are at stake. Uh, in, in my opinion and belief, what it does relative to permitting, um, limiting, um, group from coming up to the area, especially camps, day camps and seasonal communities, will have a direct effect on whether or not, uh, the COVID spreads and whether or die in, uh, our community. I applaud the fact that initially, I saw that the board had the backbone to make some public comment to indicate that it was gonna do everything in its power, uh, protect these, you know, year round. And when seasonal residents came up, then they were under their obligation and, uh, control to protect them as well. We all know that the, uh, the area is, has difficult time with its resources and its limited health capacity in the hospital. Happily, they're so close, it's gonna expend the people to come down with COVID-19, urge the board, uh, despite the fact that I want to come up, we want to operate our non-denominational camp, but I urge the board to put those type of things aside and to consider this power to make sure that the community remains safe and to take action relative to, so our kids come up to camps. We want to go be able to come up to the Catskills and see the beauty and the wonder of the wonderful area Fallsburg. But at the same time, at what cost do we want to permit that?
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Uh, BlackBerry BBE 100-5.
Yes.
We need your name, though.
Hello?
We just need your name for the record, please.
David Kersner.
Thank you, David.
Um, I just want to point, um, uh, you, you should take into account, um, all of the resources that the seasonal vacationers bring along with them. Many of us are healthcare professionals. There's a, a large percentage of the population are first responders. There's, there are, there's a Hatzalah first responder, uh, group. And there are many doctors and nurses that come as well. And that, that should be taken into account as well. So it's not as if we're just coming and hogging the medical system.
Okay, thank you. Stan. Stan. Go ahead, Stan. Hold on.
Okay, Stan, you're good.
Hi, Stan Cal. A question I have, you talked about having facilities open from May 31st. What about the, what about the case of swimming pools and synagogues on premises? How is that gonna be affected?
Again, swimming pools are regulated by the DOH. As far as synagogues, it, it'll, you know, they operate the same way they normally would. Uh, they are the governor's, uh, executive order. Add it again. Hold on.
Okay.
I just wanted to second what Ken said earlier, uh, because I agree with everything that, um, and there are certain people that's, we're talking about, would they have their vote thing, right? Still vote up here if they weren't up here six months out of the year. Other people talking about taxes, uh, they get to pay their full share of taxes. Um, but again, I, I feel like, not everyone, but the majority of the people are missing the point, um, about this, the pandemic virus that nobody's ever seen before. Um, and for the majority of the summer people that come up here, there's no social distancing. You can even see on Facebook, uh, or even on the news itself, um, goes on up here. Uh, it's, it's very obvious whether the Hatzalah community.
I asked a question.
You have to hold on, please.
Can handle, can handle, can handle their, um, uh, a, 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 a lot of people, um, they're still gonna have to bring them to hospitals, uh, whether it be.
I'm sorry, stop, stop there, but that's patently untrue. You cannot make a blatant statement like that.
What are we saying?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll, I'll call on you next. Please wait.
Um, so regardless, that, that, the hospital facilities and, uh, just cannot handle.
How's that regardless, if you just came out and made a statement?
They're speaking or are we just?
You could, but you're just making an athletic statement and then saying.
Making a what?
All right, stop, stop, stop. Listen, for this to continue this way, we have to have order. And if there's not, not gonna be order, then suspend the meeting.
If he directed people who had made comments prior, can we respond onto his response that said, because he addressed my exact questions. I wonder if I can respond, because that's usually how it works in board.
Erwin will let you speak as soon as he's done. Adam, please wrap it up.
Um, so yeah, so again, I just feel like since the, it's more about, about voting and taxes and not really concerned too much about this virus that is affecting the country. Um, this town and county cannot handle the influx of summer people, uh, that would be coming up and our hospital systems definitely cannot. So let everyone who interrupted me free to speak and comment and say what.
I, I had said two separate things with that. One is, is it a permanent change? Because it did not seem from what I had read, that this was just affect here. It seemed like this was going to be a permanent change for residences. I want to know what that have to do with the pandemic. And like, I, and if you want to address this year as one thing, but as a permanent rule change, I don't understand that. And as far as voting is a direct thing, what I'm saying is basically, you cannot vote in a place, as far as I know, you cannot vote, but you cannot live for six months of a year. I personally live in Sullivan County, right, for more than six months of the year. So I do vote. So my question is, if now you're gonna force me to not live there anymore, I'm not going to be vote. Right? If I miss a few months of the year, which is what I do now, then I'm totally forcing me to under six months, then I cannot legally claim that I'm a permanent resident and I lose my right to vote. That is nothing endemic. That is a permanent issue.
Erwin, I, first of all, number one, the comments of people in the audience are not the comments of the board. This has nothing to do. This is not a reaction to COVID-19 or coronavirus. This is, what I was very clear about in my opening was, we recognized it in that when this all started, we took a goo- good look to see when things could open. So, but this is not, this is a permanent change. This is not in relation, this isn't for this year, this due to the virus. This is simply cleaning up our zoning code. However, what you brought up or something I contemplated is something that the board will take into consideration.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Uh, Halal Zafir?
Yeah, um, so are we, so what Adam is saying before about it being a, a temporary thing, is he just to speak off without the boards, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what is, what is, uh, where he is, what he does. I don't know what his, what his role is. Say it again.
A member of the public, just like you are.
Got you, okay. I just want to make, speaking as if he has the authority to speak for the board. I just want to make sure that that's not the case. Um, my, uh, then why, if, if making everything, uh, uh, uniform, why don't we change everything to the way it was? Why do we have to shrink the dates? Why can't we make the, um, the days that aren't, uh, the way it's, that, that aren't uniform, make them all be the way it was before? What's the, the reason for shrinking it? That's my comment. That's my comment.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else with their hands up.
No, yeah, we do. We can go to Moses Friedman.
Actually, I'm going to leave this up. Melissa, you go down later.
Okay.
Moses Friedman.
Yes, hello, do you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Moses.
Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my question is, I, am I understanding seasonal occupancy is just something which is something in the code book to make easier structural for people to out to build, but to people who own property, right to use the property? I don't think this is anything it's possible to do. People have owned the property, they have the right to use the property as long as they comply with the structural code and the property is safe to use. How could you tell somebody that it can't go in there if everything is?
Good, thank you. Shimon.
We can go to Steve H.
Steve, you're up.
What right do you have to revoke the rights that were currently granted to the homeowners under law and now restrict the further usage?
Again, when I, this isn't question and answer. If you have a comment, it'll be added to the record.
So generally, what happens in in most municipalities, when a law changes, those that have had a law up until that date othered in, allowing them to maintain the prior status. Or is your intention to change that status for those who have been currently using their properties?
Again, not a question and answer period, but.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Steve Berkovic.
Abe Berkovic. Hello, Abe.
Hi, Steve. Hi, Paula. I don't think you ever had such a large audience. You might want to stick to this Zoom thing. But in any event, first off, I would like that question, not question, just comment. I don't know if there was a ten day notice. Usually a public hearing requires a ten day thing or ten day notice. I don't know if you had that ten days. Just want to make it, put it out there. Regarding this amendment to the to the code, COVID related, and I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying, if it's COVID related, best case scenario, this law doesn't go into effect then before the end of April and bring up the date to May fifteen, so you're basically saving maybe a week. So I don't think that it makes sense that this is COVID related. If it's not COVID related and it's just cleaning up the code and based on what the board for, that the comments of the board are not reflected of comments like from et cetera. I think the board has a responsibility that in a time of a pandemic, if you introduce something like this, especially on a Zoom meeting, stokes fear in the public on both sides of the aisle. Some feel they're targeted, some will use it against the the other side and saying, oh, these guys have COVID issues. And the town might not even have any COVID agenda in mind, but it's not the appropriate time, especially when we got to come together in a time of a pandemic like this. If, again, if it's for COVID, then it doesn't make sense because the dates are really here. May fifteen is right around the corner. It's not for COVID, then it's just creating for those hate mongers on Facebook, people who quote Facebook as a news source. And I don't think that the people sitting on this board are people that are looking to stoke fear, you know, fear into the public. So I think it tends to go forward with this at this time. I think there'll be plenty of time to adjust and fix the dates. It worked last year, it worked two years ago, three years ago, and the town has amended the code. I don't think today is the appropriate or this time is the appropriate time for this.
Thank you.
Steve, okay, Shimon.
Sorry, can I interject a minute? Couple things. I just want to remind everybody that at the beginning of the public hearing was that it was unlikely that the board was going to take any, because they needed to review this, especially with the amount of public comment that is here tonight. The board is going to need to review the public comment before the action at all. The second thing I want to just read is, so I I want to clarify what is being impacted potentially by this local law change, and it's really simply bungalows. A bungalow, the code states that a bungalow is a one-story dwelling structure having a minimum floor air under square feet intended for seasonal rental occupancy. So that's, that is the, that that is the type of dwelling that contacted by this this legislation. And it's that this is part of a package of legislation that the board has been working on. And this was really intended as a cleanup. We've got some other cleanup looming, including one that has to do with fence height that got interrupted by the by the pandemic. But there will be other laws coming. This is not in a vacuum.
Shimon. Let's go to Shimon next.
The voting rights are big, and it should be looked at if somebody had grandfathered in. Like, I remember when they were changing the zoning, the same concept came up and the town did look forward and were developers at that time to grandfather in anybody that was in there. So I definitely, that's what I was going to mention.
Okay, Joey.
Yeah, just another comment. I was just wondering if the town did any research in terms of the constitutional issues, in terms of whether or not it would constitute a taking under both the federal and the New York State Constitution, and if the town plans on compensating people, if it is, if it does constitute a taking under the taking clause. And if there's a vested people who bought prior to the zoning right change.
Thank you, Joey. There's, let's go to iPad, but you think your name, please. Can't hear you, man. I'm sorry.
Our property. In other words, if I can't live up there, I own property there. If I don't, the being up here six months out of the year, then you are disallowing me to use my property. That's a comment. What they're doing.
Thank you.
Right, and the other thing is, okay, my name is Terry Morgan Stern. Am I recognized? Yes, you were saying that it was not a result of the pandemic. Now, I am, I'm an, I'm an older citizen. I don't go out of my house now. I get everything delivered to my house. So I would think that you don't want to have, as some of the people have discussed, you don't want to have too many people up there, which, okay, Hatzalah will be there, but will there be social distancing as I am practicing myself, staying home and ordering food in? But as my husband just said, he's at my property, which could be worth $200,000, the hill. It's basically, I'm going to be losing my property because I can't.
I'm just curious, where's your property? Where's your property?
Do it. I live there. In that time.
I'm just, I'm just curious, where's?
Are you reading this correct?
Hold on, where, where, where's your property? Where's your property?
In Hurley.
In what?
Twin Bridge Estates.
Doesn't affect you.
New York.
You're a homeowner and this is not, this doesn't affect you when you're a year-round seasonal homeowner. We welcome you to use your home whenever you want. This doesn't have anything to do with seasonal homeowners. You're a condo owner and you're owner of a year-round community. You broke up. Do you understand what I'm saying? Just so we're clear, this has nothing to do with, anyone that has a year-round home, whether it's a seasonal weekend, if it's a year-round home, one of the year-round communities, says nothing to do with them. This is, this does not affect you one bit.
Steve, I think just for clarity, just for clarity sake, can you just state again the law, Steve, so everybody really is for?
This essentially represents things that are classified as seasonal businesses, which would be camps, some bungalow colonies, and some seasonal businesses. This is with condominiums, year-round second homes, none, this does not affect it one way or another. They can be used any weekend that they are open. Any day you want to use your house, when it comes to the town falls, we can use your home.
And this actually does, camps already have a specific time. Camps can open as of June first, and that's already, that's been in our code for years.
There are some things in our code seasonal, not second homes, but some seasonally, April first, some in May and some in June. We just look to get it more consistent. And then if it didn't work for any specific property, you'll have the ability to present, but as long as your buildings could support that use, you know, if you don't have a winterized building, we don't want you using it in February or March. But certainly, if you can make a showing that your building can support it, there's no issue. I mean, we're going to we're not looking, we're not going to limit use any more than it is now zoning code. And I want to be clear, it came up because we looked at it during the, to the COVID discussion, but this just showed us that there was no consistency through the code. Nothing about this affects seasonal homeowners. If you're a year-round homeowner, whether you use it one day a year, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, you treat it exactly the same. You're not affecting your property. And again, this is not a reaction to COVID, except I do want to be clear. And we're not, I don't want it to be said any differently. It was in the context of when we looked at it in the initial part of the COVID discussion. The only thing limiting use of property in New York State was orders, and that's, you know, we're not looking to.
Can you just repeat what this changes? What?
Seasonal uses will now be from, although it said June first, we're going to move it back to May fifteen, October thirty first.
And Steve defines seasonal uses for them.
Actually, can you do that, Paul, because I don't have it in front of me.
So a seasonal use would be a bungalow colony that is rented, not owned. So so the individuals coming there are, are.
So if if it's a co-op and the bungalow colony is operated as a, it co-owns shares, there are no renters. Does that qualify as seasonal, even though it is seasonal, specifically Suzanne's cottages on White Lake?
First of all, that's not in our town.
But I know it's been discussed there as well, so.
We can't answer that.
That's it. That's not about them. All right, Netsky?
Yeah, I'm I'm just a little perturbed. Obviously, we, I I think this clarification at the beginning has been extremely helpful. I think most of the anger would have been away. And instead of most of the people asking, everyone was tiptoeing around this question, and instead of just saying, hi, there's not a question answer system, no one was asking a question. I want to clarify what the real rule is. And now that it's come out, an hour into the meeting, that the rules affect ninety percent of the concerns that the people on this call have. I wish that these questions and this clarification would have been done in the very beginning. I I, I'm sure there are a bunch of these communities that you're talking about, but the majority of the people here who would affect them and all the questions they're asking about voting rights and about, and about taxes, all those people, none of this, it sounds to me like if, if what you're saying is correct, would be affected. And Mr. Morgan Stern's is Twin Bridge Estates, which is a co-op, and that, and I think this would answer, sir, the the guy who spoke last about you know, obviously, this is not White Lake, but, but the idea being, but the the same concept here, which is a co-op, but everyone owns individual shares and owns their own unit. What you're saying is correct, that it won't affect me. I think that probably ninety percent of the people on this call were, are finished with this meeting and would be thrilled and and aren't bothered at all by this change. If, I'm not asking as a question, but if you can clarify that, 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 that this is, really appreciate that.
Oh, I mean, can't clarify to the extent that I don't know where everyone lives or what their units are. I asked that one question to someone because I want, the way she was describing her unit, it seemed, I wanted to give her some and I I happen to, just the way she described it led me to think that it wouldn't affect it. I I can't do that for everyone, but again, this is for seasonal bungalow colonies, seasonal camps. And it really is, you know, it is, yeah, single-family homeowners, co-op owners, condo owners that are year-round project, that are open year-round, this is not affecting that. It's not.
Can we clarify that in the?
Steve, Steve. Can I, can I add one more thing? Okay, I, you know, I, I really think, I know you for many years, I know the rest of the board, I know Paula. You people are genuine, good people and have good intentions. And being said, it's, sounds clearly that this is not COVID related. Yes, you looked into it because of COVID. But that being said, you are the adult in the room. You have, you have responsibility to make sure that people who are hate mongers and people who are, shouldn't use you for their vicious agenda. And I think this failed with this meeting, not, not, not in general, this meeting, just proposing this law at this point. I think you could have waited for June, July, this pandemic, pandemic is being, it's going to be like hospitalizations is way down. That's not what I'm saying, it's what the governor is saying. And propose then, when everybody is calm and you have changed many laws throughout the years.
Rise and down, it's social distancing.
And 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 we have worked with you and we have good relationships with you and everybody in the town with you. But to allow people who are bigots to use you, I think you, that's all. I hope you don't take it the wrong way. I'm just speaking from my heart.
I hope no one takes any of my words ever to support anyone's bigotry because it's simply not part of my makeup. And we don't tolerate it. As a board, we don't tolerate it as a community, and it does is less, doesn't deserve my recognition.
Dave, this is Stephen Barshav. I haven't spoken yet. Would it be possible for me to be recognized?
Absolutely.
Hi, everybody. First of all, Steve, and and to your staff, I want to all for putting this together. It's, it's great to have a public meeting via Zoom. It's not the easiest thing to do. And I'm sure you guys were headed to scurry a bit, including that are here in this meeting today. Couple of things I want to be clear about. First, as I'm here representing JCC of Sully. And there are some concerns that I think, Steve, you and Paula need to address. The first is, is that if you're going to change the dates of this, that's a fundage to your proposed local law. You will need to renotice the public hearing because this is a fundamental change. I just want to be sure you guys do things, if you're going to move forward, that you do them the right way. The second thing is, is that the law as drafted, with all due respect to whoever crafted it, I'm just looking to change dates. It looks to me like it was just thrown together because it doesn't, whether this applies to existing approved properties or applies prospectively into the future. Normally, when zoning laws are changing, this comment was near. Zone, when zoning laws are changed, those that have been approved under the prior law typically grant, this law is silent on that. Yet the law goes into effect immediately. It is writ not clear on its face whether people who are currently able to have bungalow colonies have to come before the town. And if they do, it is impossible for them to be able to get a conditional use permit, as is required law for the season. There's no way that that's going to happen, especially given the circumstances that we all face now, new applic- especially given the circumstances that we all face now, new applications and public hearing on that as well. There are also no criteria that are set forth in the local law for the grant of a conditional use permit. Idea, what one would submit, what you say would be an easy process, but there are, there is no process. So, the reason why I make this point now is to say that when you have those kinds of attributes to a proposed local law, adatus, it gives rise to a perception that something is being done as an emergency. This thing seems to have, with all due respect, been slapped together. And I would point out to Adam Ingber and others, who have talked about social distancing and so forth, this is ambition on these communities, it's not a prohibition on their operation, they are still going to apply with whatever the governor requires by way of social distancing, no matter when they're open. So, the idea that this is addressing or not addressing COVID simply doesn't make sense. It's the governor, through emergency regulations, that will address how people socially distance, and everyone, no matter what your locals say, must comply with those kinds of criteria. My, I appreciate the fact that you are holding open the public comment for written and oral comment. I would strongly suggest that rather than continue this public hearing, I think that you should withdraw this local law. You should go back to the drawing board, other something, especially if this is cleanup legislation, then it can be adopted in a more thought, proposed, in a more thoughtful fashion. It can be proposed with all of these types of questions being given consideration, and if it is truly cleanup, then there is no urgency to this going. Those are my thoughts on behalf of JCC of Sullivan County, and I appreciate the opportunity to address your.
Thank you, Steve.
Very well said, Steve, very well said, thank you so, so much, and to Adam.
Guys.
I, I do not want to get, I do not want to.
Nope, this is not a question-and-answer period, you don't get the.
Steve, I, I understand question-and-answer, but, but you let.
Sir, I will, you don't get the comment that way.
You let Adam speak, this is not a COVID issue, it's you've been telling him this is not a COVID issue, so stop, stop right now, you let him finish social distancing, et cetera, et cetera, that was very wrong of you, very, very wrong, you should have hold it, hold it a second.
Okay.
Let's go to official with Slicky, he's been waiting very patiently for a long time.
Go ahead, Michelle.
He doesn't have his audio.
You gotta put your. Michelle with Slicky, you have to unmute your phone.
Yeah, it won't unmute, oh, here we go.
Do you hear me now? Okay, I'm in a bungalow colony for many, many years, still a bungalow colony in Fallsburg, and we come up all the years, in, in the beginning of, right after Passover holiday, we come up for weekends. And there's a lot of people that come out of our, the thing that we have, we, we, we bought this, actually, we're all owners, but it's not made as a co-op, it's, it's, we, we are, as we, before that was, was discussed, we, we, we are all shareholders of one corporation, but we all own our units. So I would like, why is it that we're coming up, we're there for 35 years, why for now we should lose our rights of, of using our property?
We, we know your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Just hide him.
I don't know the property, so I can't do. Who's next?
Okay, we can go to Larry.
Hi, how are you, Steve?
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm part of a homeowners.
We need your full name, please.
I'm sorry, Larry Con. Okay, I'm part of a homeowners association, we all own their homes, it's not seasonal. We do have people that come up and stay in the mid, for months at a time. My question is, the use of the pool and day camps, is that being your emergency changes, or what?
That's simply a matter of, that's a Department of Health issue, it's not regarding us.
Okay.
Okay, we can go to, I just lost.
Yes, for those saying that, like, I know a lot of homeowners are commenting over here, for all the homeowners that are commenting, they're worried about the other issues that affect them as well. For daycare, so just that fact that they are homeowners and they can use their property, it's not necessarily not affecting them, so their questions are valid, and the reasoning is because all the other extra, the shopping, the usages, and all the temporary seasonal businesses there. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher.
Okay. To Eliza Gertswin?
I think he spoke already.
Okay. We can go to Moishy Lockett.
Why, hello? Can you hear me? Yeah, hi, Steve, how you doing? I'm speaking on the hand for the Littlewood Board, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the pool is a DOH issue, but as far as right, but I don't believe the day camp is a DOH issue, I'm not familiar with getting DOH approval for the, for the day camp per se. Is that classified a camp, like a sleepaway camp, or is the day camp for homeowners or their year-round children, not under this new law?
Steve, may I?
Go ahead, please.
Camps, day camps, sleepaway camps are not impacted by the current law, is that camps may be occupied starting first, we were trying, the board was trying to modify the dates, so all, all different types of seasonal uses would have the same dates, the original intention.
So just to clarify, would be allowed to be used from June 1st through, let's call it, the summer months of September 1st?
That's the current law, yes.
We might extend that to May 15th to October 31st.
Okay, Steve, I saw Eliza's handbag.
Eliza Gertswin? Go ahead.
Can, can you hear me? I have two, two questions, first of all, thank you for hosting this meeting, I hope everyone stays at home. One is with the way the, the actual law is being proposed, so with the proposal itself, my understanding, the main point here is for the law to actually be uniformed. I guess there's different, different types of properties or different types of uses that are states stated for a different amount of times, and so it's easier for everyone, am I understanding that correctly?
I apologize, you broke up a little bit, repeat that.
Can you hear me, from my, from my understanding, that the whole point of this law is, is to unify the law, there are different, there, in, in the, in the town code, there, it lists different, different uses and different times you can use them, you want one uniformed code, so it's.
Essentially, here we go, especially part of the reason, several properties that don't fall under one class but may fall under many, and that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, we are trying to, you know, make it.
No, so definitely, definitely makes sense, it'll make it easier for a few people in the future when they're making properties to understand what their use will be, but the, the, just, I want to make a comment for the record that, until now, when, when somebody either started a seasonal or started a seasonal property, and they read the law, they understood it for a, a specific way, and you're trying to clean up the, clean up the law, so there's, it's not understood like that, while that, while I do understand that it's unfair to do that in a way that it limits a property use, it should be done in a way that, one of two things, use the largest amount of dates and unify it according to that, so therefore, nobody loses out that the law wasn't written in the clearest fashion. And, and, and the other way, maybe just actually the properties to the different months that are currently in there, so at least everyone's used their property, because people have properties, although they maybe only use it for a few months, but some do come up and warm up, fix it, or prepare it, or winterize it, or just to spend time over weekends that, that is available, it's unfair, the owners of property pays, pays tax according to that, bought the property expecting that to lower the value, lower the usage. And while I do understand that you need to unify performing it, it's just, it's just unfair to do it in a fashion that, that would affect an existing homeowner, going forward, obviously, to any new, like that, that wouldn't be, well, that would still affect the resale value, but maybe to any new, new construction, that, that would be fear, but it's just unfair to do it previously. And also, in the way this proposal, the way this proposal's being passed, or proposed, it's, it's unfair. Why is this not being done, what would, what would be the worst thing to push this, to pass, pass it now, with that it would take effect in a, in a year from now? You know, they're gonna take effect very shortly before, generally now, laws, laws are passed or proposed, especially ones that are just done for the sole purpose of cleaning up, cleaning up and unifying, unifying the code. It just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem to make sense, it doesn't, the town probably won't pull the applications in time to change the code, and especially with not, probably not being in full, full staff, if you propose a law for next year, and it's, and suggests that anyone who wants to change your code has been told next year when the law takes effect to, to change your code, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Can I remind everybody, please, that the chat, the Zoom group chat is part of this recorded public meeting, and so I would invite everybody to please, whatever comment in the group chat should be something that you would be making in a truly open forum, because it is part of the public record.
I would definitely do that.
So, and I'll just remind everyone, the only, other than me and our town attorney, nobody else from the town has spoken on this law, so any comments are simply public comments. Any other comments? Melissa, who we have next?
Yep, we can go to Z Silver.
Z?
First of all, thank you for holding this public meeting, I just, as far as clarity goes, if one is in the village within the town of Fallsburg, which has their own municipal codes, what? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and back to Shimon.
Only code in the book that is inconsistent with, code that you changed, or are other things that you guys are working on as well?
Paul, you want to take that?
Yeah, we're working, we're, we're working on white films that simply got cut off to, due to the pandemic, including, and these have been introduced by the town board, but there is a local law for Airbnb, Airbnb's regulate fence heights, there's a water and light rate issue. We have a couple other definitions, one that has to do with what codes the department is following. So there's, there's probably seven or eight that should be coming in shortly.
Okay, we have iPad, we'll need you to state your full name, please.
Yeah, I was talking before, Surry Morganstern. Um, I have the, my wifi went off, so I just tried to get back in, so I'm not sure if I missed it. Okay, I know when I mentioned about Twin Bridge Estates, it's our home, and it's not affected by the law that you were saying, by this new ordinance would decide, but the question is, if we have a day system, will that be affected? That's my first, okay, I want to take question.
I'll ans, I'll answer that for you, ma'am, about the day, about the day camps currently may open as of June 1st, so it does not impact day camp.
Okay, that's great, but just as a big question, because a lot of people who do go upstate, their children go to sleepaway camps, so you're saying, is that also the same category?
Sleepaway camps.
There are a lot of sleepaway camps.
June 1st, that's law.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Melissa, do we see anyone else? All right, I'm gonna have a motion to close the class chat, I'm sorry.
You're not going to see anybody else for the simple reason we got notice it was canceled. Yeah, the meeting was canceled.
Didn't come from us, but either way, what we are doing, like I said, I need a motion to hold this public hearing open for two more weeks till the next meeting.
I do have a question, I'm sorry, so you guys were saying about.
I need your name, hold on.
Oh, Gutman.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
My question is about seasonal businesses, what were you guys stating, that what's, would be the difference now in, to get a permit for seasonal businesses if I wanted to come up and open a business up there for the summer? That have, like, what is that affecting, so I could only open from May 15th to?
We can't really go into questions and answers, questions and words like that. We're supposed to read the code, the proposal would be for seasonal businesses, and right now, we're expecting it to be, we're gonna be proposed law, and we'll re-notice it and have a further comment period on it, but it'll be May 15th to October 31st. Other than that, you need to.
Just to clarify, this seasonal business law isn't changing, it has nothing to do with seasonal businesses.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay.
We have a few more questions.
Yeah, okay, I have a question, we had a fire in our in Fallsburg, and, and we have bungalows, and we have new units that we are putting up right now, how are we gonna be considered? As bungalow colony, as new units, as seasonal, how are we gonna be considered?
Contact our offices offline, speak with Molly's office.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jack?
Shite? Jack Shite?
Uh, yes, hi, thanks, I spoke earlier, I'd just like to better understand, this is not whether that the businesses are allowed to open, it's just it's are changing, is that what this is all about, and then whatever the state laws would normally be, is what we, what we would do year to year with the, whether it being the Department of Health or whatever permits that we apply for. So the renewal, I just send that in, and I guess whenever the, whenever the town reopens, don't, don't fill any of the applications that are done as I do, as I've done for the last decade? I'm sorry?
You need seasonal businesses deal, you need to file the same.
And I guess whatever, whenever this whole, whenever this pandemic is, I guess, over with, and, and town reopens, that's when they'll look into these permits.
The town is open, just as a side, the town is open, we're following the governors with regard to staffing, but all, all the businesses, all the offices within the town are open.
Okay, Steve, we have Yafa?
Yafa?
Yes, the question that I have is, have we done a study of how much in sales taxes in Fallsburg, if we limit the amount of time that season can be in their homes?
Okay, we'll, we'll note your comment, Yafa.
Steven, don't we think that there will be sales tax generated, if we're limiting the amount of time that people can be in?
And again, we have Eliza.
Hello, can I, can you hear me?
Yep.
I just want to jump in with one more comment, if, this is mainly just uniforming the code, which I'm not saying it's not, then why not expand the usage, as I was saying before, but more importantly, just to add on for another reason, if global warming is really gonna be a thing, and over time, people are gonna want to come up here for, for the warmer weather, people come up for more months, wouldn't the town rather that people make a, maximize usage of their property, therefore raise the value of the property and hire tax income for the town? Why not, why limit a property that could be used and people want to use it, and the people that pay taxes want to use it? Why, why does that make any? Why, why does that make any more sense than going the other way and saying to unify, form the code will allow everyone to be open those six months a year, or whatever it is? It, what's, what's. Or, and there's a degree for uniforming the code, but why limit, why limit existing usage? Um, especially, especially for, for people, um, who've been using it till now and still want to be doing so, I don't, especially since this has nothing to do with. If there was a separate reason to use it for that, I would completely understand that this is a long-term law, I just don't get why the town would want to limit usage for people who have been doing it till now. Uh, and, um, get benefit and pay the, um, I, and bought their properties expecting to use it for that, and have made investments, et cetera.
Good, thank you.
Uh, we have Hashi Gotlob.
I came late to the meeting, can I get it in the nutshell, are we allowed to come up to the mountains this summer?
All right, so first of all, there's nothing, whether or not any property can be used. Right now, it, we're not stopping using any property that's currently allowed by zoning. Um, the only comment I would tell you is that the governor's orders does some limitations on activities, and I would encourage you to read them and comply with them. Right now, this is not, you know.
It's gonna be the individual bungalow colony, if the people want to go up, is that correct?
The only I can tell you is that they, you'd have to, all you need, you need to comply with the governor's executive order right now.
We'd have to comply, and still the townships will want their real estate tax. Is that right?
Of cour- well, the tax law is the tax law, you need to comply with the governor's orders, and if there's, with regard to taxes, there, that's an assessment issue you need to deal with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no more hands.
I need to hold the public hearing open for two more weeks. During which time we'll continue, uh, written and written comments, and we will make some, if there's some amendments to the law, which I expect. Uh, the, this hearing will be renoticed again for more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we are starting our regular meeting, which will be probably relatively short compared to the public hearing. I need a motion to open the meeting until. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can we put up the, uh, can you take, grab the screenshot of the flag, please? Allegiance to the flag.
United States, America, to the republic which stands. For God, indivisible, liberty.
For all. I think it's boring for me to make a few comments with regards, especially with regard to the previous public hearing. I, I, I don't, I, I try to be as honest as I can. Every app, and, you know, we're talking about new laws and things with regard to the town, I think it's most important that our honesty in our presentation. And honesty in our desire as to what we're trying to get accomplished. Back when in, when the pandemic, and we were looking at different uses that would increase the population here, we were zoning code. And that's where we came to the conclusion that seasonal businesses, the dates regarding seasonal businesses, seasonal operations. And bungalows, things wildly inconsistent throughout the code, we decided we wanted to put a more consistent date system for these. However, allowing, and what, I think, from the entire board, is allowing a process to basically take a specific property that didn't fit within our dates. They can make a showing and, and absolutely a permanent issue for their period. The reasoning behind it is simply poor consistency, this year more than others, we are very cognizant of how we operate in the town and that, and, and especially seasonal businesses. But that being said, nothing we do on a town basis, all we can do is deal with our own zoning. Any operations that happened in the town of Fallsburg, or the county of Sullivan, or the state, have to comply with the governor's, uh, serious executive orders. All of which were done to hopefully slow the spread of this awful disease. Um, it is something that from the beginning, we did look, you know, I did, we did look to limit some seasonal activity to limit the population up here. The governor's office, not allow that to happen, I trust that the governor's office will, Department of Health, will. Be present through the next few months in the town of Fallsburg and the county of Sullivan, and monitor our health. Reason I bring that up is, we are, we are limited in our healthcare resources, we have thousands of second homes, I think a lot of people were on the call today. We've done previously, or tonight, or what, would affect any second homeowner that's looking to use it. They use it weekends, the summers, if you own a second home in the, in the town of Falls, where you're entitled to use it. Um, I would, the same thing I would tell anyone coming to our area, uh, is make a legitimate decision on the basis of you and your family. As to where the safest place for you to be during this crisis is. We are limited in our healthcare resources, we are limited in our retail resources, the same issues that are downstate are happening up here. So that's all needs to be common, choosing to come up here, whether it be for the weekend, for good, for moving here full-time. It's, it's a very real concern. You know, I, I kind of watched some of the comments that happened in this public hearing, and I was pretty, pretty upset and disgusted by a lot of the tone. There is no place for antisemitism in this town, there never has been, when it happens, we condemn it, it's not something this board will ever tolerate. Um, but board does have a, a will to act for the best interest of all of our residents. Our secular residents, our orthodox residents, our year-round visitors, we have to make decisions that benefit and protect everyone the same way. And that's something that we take very seriously, and, you know, will continue to take very seriously, you know, it's. I, I will say this, whenever we change in the town of Falls, there's always a. Immediate backlash without any real factual, factual, um, investigation. Now, I'll take some of the blame. Just, you know, we aren't able to get the word out the way we should, we do our best, but that's. Maybe that's not big enough, generally, what happens is, as we work through the problem, we work through proposal, people kind of recognize. What we're, what we're trying to do and the reasoning, is that proposal winds up getting massaged or changed or edited. And, you know, sometimes it doesn't, but the decisions we make as a board are never, at least not the, any board I've ever sat on. The decisions are not ever to be biased against any community or person, or, or any group whatsoever. Sometimes decisions have to be made to protect the entire community, but they're never from a bad place. And would, would act that way, and I honestly, I wouldn't want to serve with anyone that would, and I don't expect that that will change. We have five people on this board, and I'll talk about the other four, I'll let you determine what I'm about. I will tell you that from my perspective, the other four people on this board are genuinely, uh, and, and intelligent, caring individuals. And there is not an antisemitic bone in any one of their bodies, and any, any, anyone that says any different can answer to me. And I will hap- happily have, I would stand behind each and every one of the people on our board, uh, I would hope that they would, I hope they feel the same about me. With regard to the, uh, public hearing that we just left open, we're going to, will continue to collect and review and go through all the comments. Um, I will say, this is, while it was initially damned with regard to COVID nineteen, it has nothing to do with coronavirus, and it is an attempt to clean up our zoning. Anything with regard to use of property in the town of Fallsburg, all you have to do by us is satisfy the zone, and if you do, you're more than welcome to occupy your property. As long as, you know, as far as any usage of the property, that obviously has to be in conjunction with, and in, you know, allow the governor's order. But that's the, that's the only, you know, I recognize the chain of command, I respect the chain of command, this town respects the chain of command. The governor's office, the Department of Health is, are the leaders in this pandemic response, and we will follow their lead and their direction going forward. With regard to that, I will kind of move on, do we have any liaison reports tonight by the board? Nope, any correspondence tonight, Donna?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Susan's comments, if you spoke at the hearing, just keep, if you make a comment here, it goes in our record, it is not public. Okay, operation.
Steve, we have iPad.